Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the September 26, 2023 Board of Education meeting for the Arlington Heights School District 25. First tonight, we will have a public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget. The tentative budget was presented at the August meeting, and it was posted on our website. Is anyone here for the public hearing on the budget and would like to speak? Seeing nobody. If there are no additional comments, I will close the public hearing at this time. Lana, did you have any comments about that? Did you have anybody for the public hearing? Okay. Okay. Now we'll open the actual public meeting today, and I call the meeting to order. I call the meeting to order. Lana, would you please call the roll? Nierman?
Here.
Scott Palato?
Here.
Joji?
Here.
Sir Neglia?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Faso?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Exciting day to start off with. So congratulations to the newly tenured teachers. Dr. Kay will join us to recognize these valued teachers. Right, Dr. Kay?
Yes, that's the plan. If I could, just say a couple of words before we recognize them. Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed colleagues and honored guests, today we gather here in the spirit of celebration and recognition to honor a group of individuals who have demonstrated unwavering commitment, dedication, and excellence in the field of education. It is with great pleasure that we acknowledge and congratulate the newly tenured teachers of Arlington Heights School District 25. Tenure is not just a milestone, it is a testament to the tireless efforts, passion, and the significant impact these educators have had on the lives of our students. It signifies their enduring commitment to the art of teaching and the devotion to the betterment of our educational community. Each of these remarkable educators has shown resilience, adaptability, and unyielding determination to guide our students on their educational journeys. Through the challenges and triumphs, they have consistently gone above and beyond to inspire and nurture young minds, instilling love for learning that will last for a lifetime. Today, as we grant them tenure, we are not only acknowledging their past achievements, but also expressing our trust and confidence in their continued contributions to our district's educational excellence. With tenure comes not only job security, but also the responsibility to continue being leaders in our educational community, to mentor and guide new educators, and to inspire the next generation of learners. As we look forward to the future, we are confident that these newly tenured teachers will continue to be a source of inspiration, innovation, and excellence in our schools. They represent the best of our profession, and their impact will be felt for generations to come. At this time, we would like to honor each of these newly tenured teachers to be individually recognized for their accomplishments, and we will start with those who are in attendance. And if I'm surprised when I finish those who I believe are in attendance, please raise your hand to acknowledge I'm also here. We'll acknowledge those who are not present by recognizing their name at the end. So let's start with, at Greenbrier Elementary School, Olivia Weissman. Next, at Ivy Hill, we have two members that are present. And also at Ivy Hill, Justina Kubek. Maybe she's on her way. At Olive Mary Stitt, Kathleen LaRoe. Moving to South Middle School, Cheryl Demeter. Moving to Westgate Elementary School, Sarah Bet Solomon. And I believe the last one in attendance, at Windsor Elementary School, we have Anna Did I miss anyone that is still in attendance? All right. To recognize those who are not here but still earning tenure, from Greenbrier, Tiffany Rapture; from Ivy, Nicole Dombrowski; from South, Bill Kamisky, Olivia Leebie, Kevin Osmansky; and from Thomas, Thomas Kennebec. Congratulations to all of our newly tenured teachers.
Dr. Kay?
Do we have permission to allow them to excuse politely?
That's a great idea.
If they wanted to?
They have a lot to celebrate.
They do.
Thank you so much for coming.
Good night.
We will now move on to board communications. To begin, are there any board member updates in general? I think we have, we'll move on to EdRed. I think we have an EdRed update from Kevin.
Thank you, Madam President. On September 8th, I was able to attend a webinar hosted by EdRed on the topic of three pieces of legislation that were recently passed. One was House Bill 3425, which includes new mandates for bullying notifications and data collection by school districts. Another was Senate Bill 0090, which includes requirements introduced and expanded by the racism-free schools law. And then Senate Bill 1872, accelerated timeline for teacher tenure. So I'm just going to briefly share some of the main points that they focused on during that session. In terms of the bullying legislation, that did go into effect immediately when it was passed in June, so it is current law. It adds additional categories to the definition of bullying, including physical appearance, socioeconomic status, academic status, pregnancy, parenting status, and homelessness. And it does require that boards file by September 30th with ISB that, see, I want to make sure I have this correct. Actually, no, that was revised. I take it back, sorry. I was taking these notes as they talked about it. So there was an original deadline. It got pushed up to January 1st, where we have to show that we're in compliance regardless of whether our board policy or our district policy has yet been officially updated. And we now are required to notify parents involved in any reports of bullying instances within 24 hours of notification. Information about the racism-free school bill that they shared, the district will have to begin collecting data as of August 2024 if we do not already. That data will be disclosed to ISB. And in addition to reports about instances of racism or allegations of racism in the school, it also expands to include discrimination based on sex, religion, disability, or national origin. And then information about the teacher tenure updates. So previously, in most school districts, four years with proficient or excellent ratings would result in receiving tenure. That has been updated as of July 2023, where you now only need to have three consecutive school terms with proficient or above evaluation, or two consecutive terms receiving excellent in order to earn tenure. So that has changed as of July 2023, but it does not apply to people hired before that date. Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Yes.
A question for Dr. But, when, so when something's put into, as Kevin noted, that we have to move forward with it regardless of our board policy, is there a typical, either in this case or in others, when we have to update the policy by a certain time? How does that, how does our policy interact when a law is passed typically?
Yeah, so it depends. In the situation that Kevin's speaking about, whether we have a policy or not, we have to make sure that our bullying procedures are uploaded to the state. So that we do, it doesn't impact our policy. But there are laws that pass that say you must have a policy in place by X date, and then we would bring that through the procedures.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to IASB, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards. Really exciting update here. You know, I always have shared how proud I am personally of our board for the work they do for the sake of the students in our community, and that is reflected in an award that we are going to be getting. And I'm excited to share with our community that the Board of Education was recently notified that we're only one of 45 districts in the state of Illinois out of 850 districts that will receive the School Board Governance Recognition. The School Board Governance Recognition Program acknowledges school boards that learn and practice effective governance, behaviors as identified in IASB's foundational principles of effective governance. And receiving this recognition signifies that our District 25 Board understands that excellence in local school board governance requires full board commitment to obtaining the knowledge, skills, and abilities critical to good governance. And I am proud of this board, I truly, truly am, of the amount of hard work and hours that they have put into our board for the sake of the students in our community. And my colleagues have always, you know, they're, they're, they're spending a lot of time preparing for these meetings and outside and being involved in their schools, in our schools here. And we've worked really hard to align our practices and to participate in professional development. And the recognition will be highlighted at next month's IASB Division Dinner Meeting. Then we will be recognized, you know, we'll recognize this achievement at our November Board Meeting as well. And IASB will also acknowledge the District 25 Board at the annual conference in November. So pat yourselves on the back, and this is an award for our whole community because we know so well, and the research shows, that in effective board, there's a direct correlation between student success and effective board governance. So kudos to our whole community for this achievement. So well done to my colleagues and the whole community.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And next up, we have NSSEO with Liz Nierman.
Thank you. NSSEO's buildings, much like ours, are starting and staffing, and the kids are showing up, and everything is going really well. Last weekend, at the Mount Prospect Downtown Merchants Association, NSSEO sponsored a special needs hour before the festival opened to the rest of the public. So keep your eyes open for that. NSSEO is also looking for subs, and they wanted me to share that they are willing to work with parents' drop-off schedules. So if you're looking for something extra to do with your day, they will work with you if you're willing to sub in one of their buildings. And you can look on nsso.org for more information.
Thank you so much, Liz. That's helpful. Always great opportunities to sub at NSSEO or right here at District 25, right? We love NSSEO, and we love District 25 subs.
Share the wealth.
Share the wealth. No, but definitely, thanks, Liz. And so they just go to the website, right? Okay, in both cases. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have community input, and now is the time for our community input. And I want to remind our guests tonight that the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meetings in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow these guidelines. Address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. And please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board and especially to our staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. And if you've put an email address down on the comment section on the blue form, you will receive a response from us, so.
That's okay.
It's all good. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Sheila Cruz. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to ask a question of the administration, and I would like a written response. What guided the LMC specialists to select two books from their LMC collection about suicide? The two books are Thirteen Reasons Why by J. Asher, and the other is Melissa by Alex Gino. Suicide, as you know, is a very sensitive subject. I think that it's irresponsible to have these books in the elementary school libraries, and because one offers ways to commit suicide and the other is how to keep secrets from parents. I'll read a few sentences from the book Thirteen Reasons Why. Okay, I'll say it. I thought about suicide. Usually, it was just a passing thought. I wish I would die. I've thought those words many times, but it's hard to say that out loud and even scary to feel that you might mean it. But sometimes, I took things further and wondered how I would do it. I would tuck myself into bed and wonder if there was anything in the house I could use. A gun? No, we don't have one, and I wouldn't know how to use one. What about hanging? Well, what would I use? And where would I do it? And even if I knew what and where, I could never get beyond the visual of someone finding me, swinging inches from the floor. I couldn't do that to Mom and Dad. So how did they find you? I've heard so many rumors. It became a sick sort of game, imagining ways to kill myself. And there are some pretty weird and creative ways. You took pills, that we all know. Some say you passed out and drowned in a bathtub full of water, but it came down to two lines of thinking, to how to make it look like an accident. I'd drive my car off a road someplace where there's no chance of survival, and there are so many places to do that on the outskirts of town. So I've decided on the least painful way to commit suicide: pills. My stomach pulls in, wanting to rid my body of everything, food, thoughts, emotions. But what kind of pills and how many, I'm not sure. And I don't have much time to figure that out, because tomorrow, I'm gonna do it. The other book, Melissa by Alex Gino, promotes the Trevor Project, which advertises itself as a suicide chat platform that will keep conversations private. And it also offers a button on their website where the student can actually select it, and then their conversations are erased. And should they succeed in actually committing suicide, their parents may never know who counseled them and what was said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have Mark Peretti. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. I come as a concerned grandparent. My granddaughter will be in one of your middle schools next year, and my concern is, if there's a male student with male equipment, is he allowed in the same bathroom as my granddaughter? Is he allowed in the same locker room as my granddaughter? And is he allowed to compete on sports teams with my granddaughter? I never thought I'd be sitting here asking a question like this, but we live in weird, strange times, so here I am, and I'm hoping for just a simple answer. That's it.
Thank you. And the next speaker we have is Frank Bauer.
I'm a, I'm a school bus driver for Cook County School Bus Incorporated, and I'm also the union representative for the Drivers Teamsters Union and Local 222, I mean 777, excuse me. I've been doing research into electric buses, and this, this company, Lion Electric School Buses, is, is located in Joliet, and they, they have, Lion C is conventional seating, Lion D is flat nose, and the Lion A is chairlift bus. And climate change is a very real consideration in operating school buses. Therefore, I respectfully ask that the next school bus contract be, be with air-conditioned buses for the health and safety of the drivers and students. The last, we've had a spell of 100-degree high, high, high index, heat, heat index, and I've had students come on the bus and say they can't breathe, and I've heard other drivers concerned about the, the heat in the school bus regarding, and their, their, the children are putting their hands on this, on the top of the seat and, and crouching down because of the, the heat overwhelming them. Also, in, in consideration of climate change, school buses should be electrified. Funding from the federal government is addressed to school districts and not to the outsourced bus companies. That's why I'm coming to you with this proposition. That's why I'm coming to the board at this time. The present contract between Cook County School Bus and District 25 expires the last day of school in, in 2024.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for that information.
Okay.
Okay. But we have your email, and we will get back to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I give?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next speaker is Wally Skwarek. Welcome.
Hello, Dr. Joji. I'm here to talk to you about many things. One is involving global citizenship and the role that certain people have coming into communities to promote global citizenship. One of the key components of global citizenship is equity. That involves gender equity as well. Gender equity is tied up with the LGBTQ community. This often involves recognizing so much gender identity and respecting it, however. Because what they say is that the idea of man is a social construct, so that means that you can choose whatever gender you are, and then when you choose that, yeah, you roll your eyes, because it's insane, right? These people are nuts. So, so when you change, I love you. Oh, my God. Hey, Joji, this is gonna be fun. So when you tell, so, okay, hold on, let's, let's go back a little second. So they say that the concept of gender is a social construct, and the thing it is. But the concept of man is a social construct of an actual concrete concept, the idea of a male. Same with woman. If you say that a chair is a man, that doesn't mean that it's a man, because the concept of man is a social construct. That's what people that promote equity believe. So what they do is, is that they tell kids that if they want, they can change their gender because of their gender identity. They say it's because the idea of man is a social construct. It is, but it describes something that's actually concrete. If you look at gender identity, they say gender is a social construct. What does gender describe? Nobody can describe what gender describes, because there's actually no substance to it, unlike the concept of man describing something as foundational. And we know it's true, because when a man comes together with a woman, they create life. So it's not a matter of opinion. It is actually the truth. The idea of man and woman coming together to, to give life is an objective truth, and if you put your faith in that truth, you will then know truth. So many things in our lives are social constructs, but that is not. So you see, there's no such thing as gender identity. It's a construct, but it doesn't actually describe anything. It's just a feeling, an innate feeling. It can never be proven, like how you can prove man and woman create child based on just objective reality, witnessing it. So you see, you have books in this school that tell children that if they want, they could change their gender identity. But there's no such thing as a gender identity. It's just a construct. How can you change your gender if gender itself is a construct? Do you see how it doesn't make sense? Does that make sense to you guys? Like, there's nothing to actually change, because it doesn't exist. So right now, everywhere, they're performing experiments on children based on something that doesn't exist. We created an industry for it. Right now, in terms of experiments, we're worse than pre-World War II Nazi Germany. And Ms. Joji here, that's her main purpose. She brings equity to America. Ms. Joji, you describe yourself as cultivating global citizenship. I'm not going to stop. You're going to listen to me.
Yeah, but your time is up, sir.
If you listen to global, if you, no, hold on, everyone, you have to listen to me.
Sir, your time is up. Sir, your time is up.
So this woman, this woman is about promoting global citizenship.
We'll take a break. Okay, it is 7:45, and we will resume our meeting, and we are going to start off with communications from district partners. I don't believe our PTA liaison is here today, so we're, we're good to go there. And ABC25 Foundation, Gina, do you have a report for us today?
I do, thank you, Madam President. So first and foremost, thank you to all of the attendees from our community at our event at Arlington Ale House. Discussion was very engaging and led to really good new ideas and a better ability to collaborate with the families and with our community at whole. Also, a shout out to Arlington Ale House for letting us use their space and mingle with the parents and the community. We're always looking for more partnerships with our local businesses as well as other organizations, and this was a really great marriage of all of that. We will have another community event, another outreach event similar to this one. It will be held on October 30th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. This one will be at Arlington Heights Memorial Library in the Hendrickson Room. This will also entail not only an overview of ABC25 and what we, what we are doing as a foundation, our plans for the future, as well as some interactive collaboration with the attendees. And we are going to have several of past grant winners and photos available so that people can interact with it and see what the money goes towards and how our incredible teachers utilize these grants to better, to better support what they're teaching in all of the classrooms. Please stay tuned. We will have more exciting news coming from ABC25 as well. Notes for the teachers that are listening. Grants are due on October 15th. We look forward to having all the submissions. Allison, if you could put a note out. And then for membership drive for this year, we have had three out of nine schools already achieve their membership goals, and we are looking forward to the other six attaining theirs as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much, Gina, and I love the new ABC25 Foundation. The website's great. So if you haven't had a peek, have a look, it looks really good. Next up, we have ATA with Alison Berg. What do you have in store for us today?
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna do a little spotlight on Windsor. Since it's my home school, it's the easiest one to get all the information for our first thing in September. So here we go. Welcome to Windsor Spotlight on. This year at Windsor School, we started something called Camp Windsor. It's a we started something called Camp Windsor. It's a new school-wide program. Camp Windsor provides an opportunity for more students and staff to interact. All the adults in our building, teachers and TAs, have all been assigned a den. Makes up six kids, um, of varying grades, either intermediate or primary. And once a month, we have den meetings where we play games and just have some fun. It's a great opportunity for students to become familiar with other staff members in the building, make new friends. We're building on our ACL program, which is the social and emotional learning skills, and we're having fun. It's just a great way for students to connect to another adult in the building other than their teacher or their team of teachers, right? So if you're like a third grade student and you haven't had Ms. Berg yet, then you get to come to my classroom for the den and you get to be with other students and you get to know me as a point person in the building at any time of day. You can always say hello to Ms. Berg because now we're like, you know, BFFs because we're den mates. So it's pretty cool. Um, our kindergarten students are hard at work. They designed and grew their very own apple orchards. Once their orchards grew, they picked their apples, and then they even created their own bakeries to sell their tasty apple treats at school. So a pretty fun project for kindergarten. Our first grade classrooms, speaking of ACL, are working on their classroom charters. That's one pictured right there. They're learning how to add and subtract with number bond, bonds, um, practice their sight words, read phonics play, they read phonics plays with partners. Uh, students spent time learning about school workers at Windsor and are researching and learning about community leaders as well. Second grade, this has been going on for probably as long as I've been at Windsor, for over 20 years. They're having their Pioneer Day this week, where they are going to take a field trip to the Arlington Heights Historical Society. The second graders dress up as pioneers and they bring a pioneer-approved lunch to school that day, usually in a sack. And they walk down to the Historical Society and they have a day doing all kinds of pioneer, um, activities, including playing games, gasp, without technology. They play jacks and other things that kids did before they had iPads. It's very enlightening for our children. Um, and they get to make their own orange soda and cornbread on that day as well. It's a really fun day for everybody, including their teachers, who also dress up as pioneers. Um, our third grade students are becoming weather experts right now. This is just two of many pictures I have. They're working on the green screens. They become, um, experts on severe weather and produce, um, they're researching severe weather and its effects. They use the greens, the green, uh, screens to transport themselves, um, into some pretty scary weather situations, as you can see right there. We have a drought and some lightning, pretty scary stuff. Our fourth grade students are busy making rivers in school, who wouldn't like to play with mud and water in school. That's a picture of some of our students at work there. Uh, we, um, look at the different, um, effects of the, of changes to the earth, including how rivers affect the earth. And so we did, um, different variables with each station, um, fast-moving rivers and slow-moving rivers and, you know, high slopes and low slopes and all those kinds of fun things. And our fifth graders visited, um, a couple of weeks ago, Camp Duncan, where they learn about being part of a team and taking part in many of their team-building activities. It was a fun day by all. And then in other news, just around the district, I have some other things. South Band, the South Middle School Wind Ensemble, will be performing at the Autumn Harvest on Saturday, October 2nd. Their performance time is at 11:45 a.m. Mark your calendars. The South Middle School Band is the only group to have performed at every Autumn Harvest Festival since its inception 32 years ago. The only time they were unable to perform was a rainout and, of course, during COVID. The South Middle School Wind Ensemble is proud to be the only group to have this distinction. So if you're available, please come out and see them again on October 2nd. Um, fitness has not, fitness fun has not stopped over at West, construction has not stopped the students at Westgate and Dryden from having PE fun. At Ivy Hills, students have been working on meeting new friends. Uh, Ivy just had a new student gathering during their lunch recess. New students gathered in their courtyard to play games, get to know each other, and learn a little bit more about Ivy Hill. Their Diversity and Equity Committee at Ivy organized this event. And then last but not least, Lemons of Love, um, excuse me, which I've talked about before. This past Saturday, both South and Thomas Student Councils hosted around 25 pop-up lemonade stands around town. Um, through our, throughout Arlington Heights, all their proceeds are going to be donated to Lemons of Love, which supports them in their effort to spread joy to cancer patients through care packages. Uh, they're not exactly sure how much they've raised exactly, but it looks like South raised about $1,600 and Thomas raised about $2,000. And they also received online donations as well. It's a super cool, I've talked about Lemons of Love here before. It's a very cool program. And actually, I'm like Facebook friends with people. I saw it all over social media this weekend, not even as a teacher. But here are some of our students having PE fun despite some construction going on. And here is our Ivy Hill friends at lunch, getting to know one another. And here is a compilation of pictures from the Thomas Student Council for the Lemons of Love and the various stands that popped up around town. Had a nice weekend to do that. And then last but not least, we have a thank you to Dr. Bein. Um, Dr. Bein saw a Twitter post of one of my classes, not mine. Um, this is from Amy from Ivy Hill, I should say. Amy from Ivy Hill let me know that Dr. Bein saw a Twitter post of her class listening to the story of potato pants and doing a funny activity, uh, with it in the LM, Ivy, uh, Hill LMC. So Dr. Bein, along with some help from some family members, made some adorable stuffed potato pants characters for the whole class. She wrote the sweetest note to the students and the kids thought it was absolutely the coolest to be able to hold and keep their very own potato pants stuffies. She still can't believe how much time and effort Dr. Bein put into this project to bring such joy to these first graders. Dr. Bein will be so incredibly missed. And that's from, um, Amy over at Ivy. And there's a picture of those potato pants. So I just wanted to throw that in. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share. Next month, I'll talk about a different school. To, to be determined. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Uh, thank you so much, Allison. Those are really adorable. Very cute. So many great happenings. Thanks, Allison.
Did you get to do the, um, PTA one? Because I do have a report from her.
Oh, yeah. So why don't you do it now? That'd be a good time.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, our Arlington Heights Council of PTAs president, um, Megan Worthington did send, uh, a report for tonight. Um, she had three, uh, meetings at the same time. So her report is, "Good evening. The Arlington Heights Council of PTAs is off to a great start this year. Each of the District 25 PTAs have been hard at work with exciting activities. We started our year with the PTA Launch Event, where we kicked off the 2023-2024 school year. As I'm sure the board has seen on social media, there have been many exciting PTA events and activities already happening at each of our schools. We've had back-to-school bashes, pool parties, and fall fests galore. We've stocked teachers' lounges, house-hopped, and met new kindergarten friends. Each school's PTA has been hard at work creating fun activities to bring everyone together. On October 16th, all of our local PTA units will gather for the annual region meeting, where each of our PTAs will be celebrated, and many will receive awards for their hard work and innovative programming. We are looking forward to a great year of partnership and more fun PTA events to come."
Thank you, Megan Worthington via Dr. Bein. Um, okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda now. Um, and thank you to the PTAs for everything they've been doing. They've been really, really busy. You know, there was a Dryden Block Party as well for, for some of us Dryden parents this weekend. Lots of fun stuff happening. So moving on to the consent agenda, we, if this is an action item, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, Personnel Report, an addendum to Personnel Report. B, Treasures Report. C, Invoices. D, Special Regular and Closed Session Meeting Minutes of August 15th, 2023. E, Special Closed Session Meeting Minutes of August 29th, 2023. E, Hold Closed Session Minutes of January 24th through May 23rd, 2023, per Board Policy. F, Release Closed Session Minutes of January 10th, 2023, and June 13th, 2023, per Board Policy. G, Hold Audiotapes of September 23rd, 2021, through October 7th, 2021, and November 11th, 2021, through December 16th, 2021, per Board Policy. H, Destruction of Audiotapes July 15th, 2021, through September 2nd, 2021, and October 12th, 2021, per Board Policy.
Thank you, Greg. Um, please, could I have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Liz. Alana, can you please call the vote?
Scott Polato?
Yes.
Joji?
Yes.
Sir Niglia?
I'd love to.
Michael?
I can. Yes.
Brian, they'll need to hear you say yes.
Yes.
There you go.
And Michael said yes.
Yes.
Plasso?
Yes.
Neuman?
Yes.
Um, okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to student learning. Um, our Department of Student Learning has worked with a highly regarded expert in the field of gifted learning. Tonight, the board will hear about an audit of our advanced learning programs. And Dr. Fitzpatrick, could you please provide the report findings to the board? And, welcome to our guest.
Thank you.
So as you mentioned, we're here tonight to share some information from a review of our district's advanced learning opportunities and procedures. And to provide some context for the review, I'll share some background information about the evolution of advanced learning in District 25. So back in the spring of 2011, a District 25 Gifted Review Committee developed a continuum of services to meet the needs of a broader range of advanced learners, including identification procedures for advanced math and ELA courses, English Language Arts. Then in, starting in the 2016-17 school year, a District Advanced Learning Review Committee consulted with Julie Luck Jensen, past president and board chair of the Illinois Association for Gifted Children, to revise the criteria for placement into advanced courses. In the fall of 2019, the Department of Student Learning began reviewing our student placement and performance data. However, this work was interrupted by the pandemic and subsequent inconsistent student achievement data sets. However, the work resumed in spring of 2022 with the goal of reviewing our identification criteria and extent to which our current advanced learning opportunities meet the existing needs of our students. At this time, we commissioned a review of the district's advanced learning opportunities and procedures, uh, with Dr. Scott Peters. Um, and Katie will share a bit more about Dr. Peters in a minute. Um, tonight, we are presenting Dr. Peters' findings and recommendations at the request of the board, and will now begin action planning. And then following tonight's presentation, the Department of Student Learning, in collaboration with the Department of Student Services and the Director of Equity and Multilingual Program, will review and consider the report recommendations, embark on short and long-term action planning, and report back to the board at a later date regarding any updates to district advanced learning opportunities and procedures. However, uh, well, and our initial goal will be to update the identification criteria this spring for placing students into advanced math and ELA courses for the fall of 2024. So now I'll turn it over to Katie, our Advanced Learning LMC and Creative Arts Coordinator, to introduce Dr. Peters.
Okay. So I am pleased to introduce Dr. Scott Peters to you all tonight. He is part of Partners in Advanced Education Incorporated, a professional consulting company that works with organizations to research existing policies and practices and provide recommendations for improvement based on stakeholder goals and objectives. The work of PIAE focuses on data use, equity, and effective use of resources with a primary outcome of improving educational experiences for children. Dr. Peters received his PhD from Purdue University, where he specialized in applied research methodology and gifted and talented education. He spent 13 years as a professor of assessment and research methodology at the University of Wisconsin Whitewater before his current role as a senior research scientist with NWEA, the Northwest Evaluation Association. At NWEA, his research primarily focuses on identification of student exceptionalities, gifted and talented programming outcomes, and educational assessment. We are happy to have him here tonight as he presents his findings in a review of our district's advanced learning opportunities and procedures. Welcome, Dr. Scott Peters.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I, I feel like it's a, it's a high bar this evening. Thank you for having me. Thank you for, uh, for Katie and Becky. Um, so thank you for having me this evening. As, as Katie said, my name's Scott Peters. Um, tonight, what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of an overview of what my charge was. I guess I could go right to the things that I say in my slides. Is an overview of kind of what my task was, what my charge was from the district. That also includes a little bit of some other things that came from meeting with families and meeting with staff and other administrators that weren't necessarily in the original charge. Explain some of the things I found, specifically in your data, in talking with stakeholder groups, uh, and then also in comparing, in a lot of cases, your data to the, um, the learning opportunities that the district currently offers. Um, because the goal is to find places where opportunities could be added or expanded, um, to enfranchise more, uh, more students. Uh, and then, of course, to answer your questions, um, I am giving you probably more, this is not a summary of how things are being implemented. Luckily for everyone, I don't have any control over how the things are implemented. That's up to all of you folks, of course. So I'm giving you a lot of the details of kind of the things that I found and thought along the way. And as Becky mentioned, this is really just the start of the process then for implementing these things. So there's a lot of options in the report. Um, one of the things I mentioned to the group this morning was that there's not really a single path or single best option. There's just a lot of potential choices that have different implications in terms of costs and equity and services and things like that. So there's a lot of information in here. Um, I'm gonna try to do justice to your time as much as possible, uh, because I know these meetings can go late, but, um, please do ask questions and stop me if you want to spend more time on anything. So, um, this is a very high-level summary of both the charge that was presented to me and also some of the, I guess, challenges or observations that really stood out in some of the focus groups. So, um, so just for context, I had meetings with principals and administrators, the, um, the advanced learning staff, and two different groups of parents. So in those meetings, in addition to kind of the charge that was formally presented to me, these are the things that kind of came up. So the first thing was a, a lack of services beyond acceleration and in earlier grades. So as you all are probably aware, um, advanced math services really start to kick in in fourth grade, advanced language arts in sixth grade. And there are many great things about those services that I'll talk about, but of course, they could be the greatest services in the world, and they still don't help in first grade. Um, so one of the observations that was brought up is what else could we do? What else should we consider in terms of offering? And what did the data point to as something that might make sense for us? That's where we're gonna really go next, is there's gonna be some figures and some charts, uh, just to forewarn you. Um, there was also a general sense that came out from some of the parents, but also communicated through staff from parents, this general concern that if I don't get my student into the advanced classes, there's no other opportunity for, um, like, an advanced student to be challenged. This idea that, and this is not unique to Arlington Heights, though. There's this idea, either get my student into the gifted program or they're bored. It's sometimes as far as this is good school and this is the other. And I don't think that's, that's, you know, I think that's a fair concern for people to have. I don't think it is something I noticed, but there is this kind of, um, desire to get into the thing, I guess is what I would talk about. Um, there was definitely a desire by the staff and the stakeholder groups to have greater defensibility of the identification criteria, which I think is very important, being able to be comfortable sitting down with a parent and saying, "I would love to talk to you for an hour about all the reasons of this identification policy, because we've thought through it and there's a rationale behind it." That's a really good place for a, a district to be. And then there was just a general sense, um, by the staff, by parents, by classroom teachers, by building principals, there's just too much time spent on testing. And that isn't necessarily like the standardized testing, although that's certainly a part of it, um, but also the additional placement test that students take as part of the current process. And, um, while I currently work for NWA, I'm obviously not speaking for NWA tonight, but, um, all assessment should pay for itself in terms of better student learning. You know, if an assessment takes three hours to administer, it's our job as educators to make their lives three hours better. And so if we give a test and do nothing with it, that test should not be given, you know, kind of, kind of full stop. So a big part of what we spent our time on in the work group today was how do we make sure we're being good stewards of staff time, of student time, so that we're not just testing them for no reason. And hopefully you'll see that come up in the recommendations. So, okay, the first thing, oh, why isn't this clicking? It's because that doesn't control that. First thing I want to do is talk about data. The first thing I was asked to do is to look at student data from the standpoint of what does it point to as needed services? And how does what's in your data compare to the services that are offered? Do those, do those align? Does everybody have a home? Is kind of how I think about it. So this is just a picture of your third grade math, so end of year third grade math data. And I'm gonna present a couple of these figures and hopefully for a specific point. So the red line is the national average. Um, the blue line is what is considered grade level in the state of Illinois. I'll mention that in just a second. It might seem strange to see so many students, like, to the left of grade level, but as I'll mention in a second, that's because Illinois has the highest bar for grade level of any state in the country. So it's a little bit of a moving target. Like, there's no 11th commandment that, you know, has been brought down from on high that says this is grade level. Each state has their own. Um, what I kind of want to point out here is, so this, um, your 50th, or, so your 70th percentile, I'm flipping this. Your 50th percentile and the national, 70th percentile are about the same. Your district is about 20 percentile ranks higher, 20 percentile rank points higher than the national average. So the national average, that mean is right there at the red line, yours is at the blue line. It's about 20 percentile rank points higher. However, something I'll kind of point out a little bit better on a later slide is while you have, um, kind of this bump to the right, you've got more above-average students than the nation as a whole. the nation as a whole, you also have the entire range of the distribution. You know, this is third grade, what you're seeing up here are students, you know, on the lower end that really cannot count to 10. That's kind of what those 160s are pointing to. As well as students, you know, this is third grade, and there are students scoring at a 240, that's generally in the ballpark of algebra proficiency. So a really wide range of proficiency. You know, a lot of time, we think of where the averages are in districts, but it's actually the distribution, how different kids are in terms of their readiness, that can inform services. You know, it's not just where the typical kid is. This just kind of highlights that point about Illinois, you are the far-right bar. So the average nationally is at about the 56th percentile of kids, that's where the grade level cut score is. In Illinois, it's closer to about the 78th percentile. This is going to become relevant, because if I just go back for a second, if I were you, I'd be surprised looking at that blue line, which is grade level in Illinois, and sing. Seems like not very many kids above grade level, but grade level in Illinois is a very high bar. I'm not saying it's wrong, it's just literally the highest in the country. So it's just kind of a, I don't want to say take it with a grain of salt, but there's just ways to interpret that. If you look at Illinois nationally, roughly one-third, about 30% of students are at grade level, in your district it's 50, hence the 20 percentile rank points higher than national average. We're at the peak of the data point of this presentation, we will be going down from that in a minute. This is not your jam. This is just the same thing but for reading. Again, same thing, you actually have an even bigger kind of bump, like, just to the right there in reading. Something I will pull out of this is, I also looked all the way down to first grade, just because one of the things I was interested in is, is there something unique about third or fourth grade when the services start, where that's when we've got these really advanced kids, like, something in the water, or when you turn seven or something, I don't know. I looked down to first grade, and we see something really similar. And just to give you, I just pulled out some kind of random statistics, your top 5% of first graders outscore half of American third graders. So we have some pretty wide distribution in terms of proficiency, and it's, you know, it's at both ends. You really do have the entire kind of achievement distribution in your classes. So this is where I want to spend just another, maybe an extra minute or so. So I went to the spring of sixth-grade math for a reason. So if you look at those two orange bars, you know, one on the left and one on the right, that represents the middle 80% of your sixth graders in the spring. So kind of the meat of the distribution there, eight out of 10 students are within that box. The far-left, you know, line there, on the, let's call it the low end, is roughly the proficiency level for a fourth grader. So these are sixth graders, so that far-left bar is on grade level for a fourth grader. The right bar is above 3/4 of American 12th graders. So to give you some kind of context for the range that we're talking about here. So on one side, we've got what is considered a grade level cut score for a fourth grader. On the other side, we've got outscoring the majority of American high school graduates. If you don't like the percentile cut score for a second, you can think about it in terms of Illinois standards. Even by Illinois standards, that range would be easily more than the grade 3/8 spectrum. So imagine now this is in a classroom. Now, this is a single classroom at Windsor or Ivy or somewhere, got 28 students. Those 28 students in sixth-grade math include those that are proficient according to fourth-grade math and really college-ready for math, and that's only the middle 80% of the distribution. Then we have the tails, we have kind of our outliers on both ends. And so thinking about it in terms of, you know, my armchair estimate, if we're asking how many grade levels are in each classroom, it's probably something in the area of six or seven grade levels of readiness. And so now, the question becomes, how does that match with the services? Do we have a home for every kid where there is some kind of learning opportunity in the classroom, pulled out, pushed in, differentiation, special education, whatever, bilingual, multilingual education, that makes sure every one of those kids has a place where they're appropriately challenged? That's kind of how we go about this. So, and this is just kind of the way that I think about it. This is just a different visualization of multi-tier systems and supports, or multi-level systems and supports, or RTI, or whatever it's being called today in education, because we love our acronyms very, very much, they mean a lot to us. You know, the middle is kind of your core, that's your tier-one, your grade-level instruction, your core content with great differentiation, teacher training, you know, really high-expertise teachers with technology and resources, trying to challenge as wide a range as possible as kids as possible. Question I always ask is, can differentiating from the core reach 80, 90, 100 percent of students? In some districts, they're more homogeneous. They're homogeneous slower achieving, homogeneous higher achieving, most are not. You know, the average nationwide is like five to seven grade levels of readiness is typical in a classroom. And so then the question becomes, what other things? What do we need to have at tier-two or at tier-three, and in what areas, to make sure that everyone's being appropriately challenged, showing academic growth, all the things that we care about? And that's really the question that, you know, I then asked. So we just talked about the data, let's compare it to the services. So some of you are probably really familiar with this, some of you might have been a little while since you've thought about the, every individual service offered. What are advanced learning opportunities in the district? Advanced Language Arts in grades 6 through 8, so identified with the spring of fifth-grade data. Just a kind of a direct quote from your all's website, you know, the gist of ALA, Advanced Language Arts, is really greater depth, you know, going into greater, because the students are advanced, they're able to kind of compact out of a little bit of content and go into greater depth, explore more concepts, but it is primarily enrichment of grade-level content. That's not good or bad, it's just the focus of the class. Advanced Math starts a little bit earlier, using end-of-third-grade data to place students starting in fourth grade up through eighth grade. Advanced Math is different in kind, in that kind of by definition, it is grade-level accelerated. So you can kind of see on here on the bottom, like, Advanced Sixth Grade Math, which is already advanced in the district, is going on to seventh-grade math. So it's literally skipping or compressing content. That meets a different level of student need than, say, enriched grade-level content. So these are our first kind of two buckets of services, and these are the meat. This is, the vast majority of the district's services are middle-school ALA and 4 through 8 Advanced Math. There are other pathways, if you think about that MLSS model, there are other places where advanced kids are challenged. They are challenged through other forms of what's known as subject-specific acceleration. Hopefully, you've heard about some of these students, because these are really great students. You've got an eighth grader that's taking Algebra II Precalc, you have eighth graders that are taking Geometry, you know, rarely, not commonly, but these are other opportunities to challenge advanced kids. So if you think of that whole range of learners, by having that option, we kind of take off a couple of the most advanced kids and have provided them with a good home. That may not be a great analogy, I'll have to work on that. But they're appropriately challenged, so good, now we can look at, think about the other kids. Full-grade acceleration, I don't know if this is something that you've all talked about or not, but Illinois is kind of unique, Illinois and Ohio are kind of unique because of the Accelerated Placement Act, where districts are legally required to provide access to full-grade acceleration, and that's something the district does have. So this is students that enter kindergarten early, go from the end of first grade to the beginning of third grade, that's another tool in the toolbox. Same for subject acceleration, so staying in third grade but maybe taking fourth-grade math or something like that. And then, of course, there's student learning coaches and just the general good teaching practice to challenge, of course, that happens as well. So this represents all of our tools, ALA, Advanced Math, student learning coaches, full-grade acceleration, those are all of the tools that we have to challenge advanced learners in the district. And so some takeaways before I get into then recommendations, we'll talk about identification and services. I already mentioned, you know, the district's certainly advanced, but also incredibly diverse, so depending on the grade level I looked at, you have students at the 15th percentile and also at the 99.9th percentile. Like I said, you've got fourth graders that are really scoring proficient according to eighth and ninth-grade standards, you know, very, very advanced kids, which is great, but sixth-grade levels of proficiency is not unusual. The district's service, baseline, so core curriculum, not advanced curriculum, is appropriately higher, it's designed for a higher cohort of kids, which is good, that is a strength. But services are limited before grades four or six, that's really limited to the classroom teacher, those coaches, or if you are a super-advanced kid, you get a grade accelerated. So thinking about that diamond for a second, you know, before grades four or six, we've really got tier-one, and then if you're really advanced, we got maybe a grade acceleration. But there's kind of this, it was actually described as a donut hole by one of the teachers, where you're kind of an above-average kid, so maybe a little too advanced to be getting a lot of attention from grade-level curriculum, and I don't mean that disparagingly, but just you're kind of above average, but you're not high enough to kind of fall into the ALA, you're not high enough to get grade accelerated, and so we've got a little bit of a donut hole there that I'll, can keep using that term, that is kind of an unmet need in the district. So let's talk identification. So this is how are students identified for grades 6 through 8 ALA or grades 4 through 8 Advanced Math? Two big kind of standardized data points, those are MAP Growth and Math and Reading, and also the Cognitive Abilities Test. Do you want me, should I talk about those tests? Are people pretty familiar? Okay, thank you. I'm happy to talk about those in greater depth, but I have stars next to those because those are unique in that they're universally administered, so every single student takes MAP, every single student in grades 3 and 5 take COGAT. The second two data points are the Math and ALA Placement Tests. And then, as you'll see when I point to the rubrics, you can get a single point from a teacher rating scale, but those are not universally collected. Non-universal data points bring up equity concerns, just because as soon as we don't collect a data point on someone, we have to decide on whom we're going to collect it. Is it based on a teacher referral, is it based on a parent phone call? And those all just start to insert error into our identification system. So let's talk through these data points. So identification requires six points. You can see just from the rubrics that are up here where you can get those points. Remember, the top two are given to everyone. So a high enough scoring student can come out of the gate, they can score the 9th percentile in MAP Reading, they can then score a 130, which is the top 2% on COGAT, they have their six points, they're in. Students could also score, say, the 93rd percentile in MAP Reading, and the top 5% on COGAT Verbal, they get four points. And then they have a secondary path where they can get a point from the rating scale, and those students also sit the placement test. So district-wide, if a math student scores at the 93rd percentile, sorry, flip that around, if a math student scores at the 85th, or a reading student scores at the 93rd, they are invited to sit the placement test. So just for context, about 88 fifth graders took the math placement test last year. So we got some students that are in automatically on MAP and COGAT, and then a lot of students that score at the 85th on MAP Math, sit the placement test, and then we kind of add up the points to see if they get to six points. Before I actually get into, we spent a lot of time in the work group today talking about kind of, there's shorter-term, smaller lifts, kind of tweaks that could be made to the existing system that would absolutely make it better. These are not cop-outs, these could absolutely make it better. Or there are bigger changes that would address a wider range of the kind of stakeholder concerns, and I'm going to talk about both. The small tweaks would be, right now, those rubrics, think of those rubric bars to get in, that six points is here, but the points necessary to get on the radar and therefore take the placement test is down here. Something we have happening is a lot of kids score like the 86th percentile on MAP, high enough on the math test to take the placement test, but not high enough to get six points, and it happens year after year after year. So imagine, student, fourth grade, takes the MAP test, gets an 86%, sits the placement test, gets a, you know, 70%, gets zero points, doesn't make it in. Next year, 89% on the MAP Math, takes the placement test, gets an 82%, gets two points, doesn't make it in. So one of the observations that was brought up is, we're doing a lot of testing, because a lot of kids are passing the first hurdle, taking the placement tests, these folks are going through all the work, the kid's sitting a lot of extra tests, and is still not getting served. Keep in mind, that kid's still probably under-challenged, still a high kid, just not high enough to get in. So one tweak that can happen is, it would be relatively straightforward to kind of bring these two things into greater balance, so that we don't have so many kids that are kind of running into this phase-two wall. You know, you can bring those two into greater alignment in a number of different ways that we don't need to go into now. We also need to even out the points, so just for context on those rubrics, so like, right now in math, scoring the top 2% of MAP gets you three points, but in order to get three points from the COGAT, you need to score in the top 1/3 of 1%. I don't think any of us really knew why. I mean, it's a, you know, it's one of those things where the person that came up with it has since moved on or something like that, there's not a clear rationale for it. So it would be very simple to make some of these smaller tweaks to the rubric process, to the process that decides who is tested. We would miss fewer kids, we'd test fewer kids, it would be better. But there are also, and I think the team was pretty in agreement, that maybe these are, this is not the preferred path, and maybe some of the larger changes would address more of the concerns. So what are those larger recommendations? The first would be is to either drop the optional items, the items that are not universally collected, and to instead make identification decisions based on the two universally-collected data points. And I have a bunch of different pathways that have modeled that, that we'll talk about, so I kind of pretended like that was what we were going to do, and I ran about six or seven different ways that that could be implemented. And then, that's just the identification part, I'll walk through those things in just a second. And then we have some service expansion as well, that would address kind of some of those donut holes and also some of those pre-grade four, grade six learning needs. So what would a, you know, bigger lift, bigger change, the identification process look like? Well, we had four data points before, MAP, COGAT, Placement Test, Modified Rensselaer Rating Scale. Instead, now we would be talking about taking just the, say, MAP Math and COGAT Quantitative, or MAP Reading and COGAT Verbal, and identify students who are based on some kind of alternative normative group. And so what, that's just a fancy way of saying is, you know, right now, with those, with the matrices, you're getting points compared to the nation or based on a cut score on COGAT. That results in really kind of unpredictable service populations, because as kids' scores changes, you might identify more or fewer kids. And it's also just kind of really disparate, you're going to have different numbers of kids from year to year, post-COVID, there are going to be fewer kids because of COVID learning loss, students are just scoring at slightly lower levels. So in these alternatives, I ran a bunch of these different models, and I'm going to show you kind of how these worked out. I've got the current system, I've got a system that instead of using the rubric, is purely based on national norms, so you would be identified if you score in the top 7% nationally in MAP and COGAT, that's an average of the two, so averaging the two data points together. Number three would be if you scored, say, in the top, you know, about 13% of the district, so not the nation, but the district. If you're wondering where these numbers came from, like, Y 93, Y 87, it's because it keeps a fairly similar-sized number of kids, roughly equivalent number of kids, so that we're kind of apples to apples, but you wouldn't have to keep those. School norms would identify kids if they score in the top percent of their school, so top percent of the nation, top percent of the district, top percent of the school, these are all just different frames of reference. And then six and seven are kind of dual pathways. Six is just taking two, but also adding a second pathway of four. So say you'd be identified for fourth-grade Advanced Math if you scored in the top 13% of the nation, or the top 13% of your individual school. Talk about any of these in as much detail as you'd like, Lord knows I can certainly do it, but I'm going to show you a bunch of different outcomes. So for each one of those, I looked at the demographics of the kids identified, EL, race, gender, something called a representation index, so that's just 1.0, means we have perfect representation. So if our students are 10% African-American, the gifted program is 10% African-American, that's an RI of 1.0, that's kind of parity. I also looked at their average scores, and I also looked at whether or not the same students would have been identified under multiple pathways. Because really what I was trying to do here was to see, would this simpler process get us like the same kinds of kids in terms of like need? Okay, I'm going to use the analogy, I wasn't sure if I was going to use it or not, but there was this old Chicago Bears, I think it was an old-style commercial that was about taste great and less filling, this is from like the 80s, so this might be a dated reference. But really what I was trying to do is see, could we make an identification process that involved a lot less staff time, a lot less student time, fewer subjective data points, but got us the same benefits? It was like, can we have it both ways? Can we make it cheaper and faster and still get us like the same kind of thing? And I didn't know if it was going to work. It mostly worked. So these are the demographics, I kind of wasn't even sure if I wanted to share these because there's not much difference. My big takeaway is that across all these different pathways, so blue is your current population on the far-left, orange is national norms, gray is district norms, and we get to the ore pathways, you see minor differences across the pathways. But my takeaway from this is, you could use your current system, you could use district norms with MAP and COGAT, the second blue bar is just using MAP, so throw away COGAT, just use MAP. Any of those different pathways get us really very similar demographics, both good and bad. I also should point out, and you all certainly know the demographics of your district, but Hispanic is about 5%, so the difference between a 1.0 and a .5 is like one kid, just because of proportions, so it could just be one random kid in one year is why something is at one, so just to take that with a grain of salt. But really, when I look at this, aside from a little bit of differences with low-income students, so a lot of the alternatives would actually catch low-income students a little bit better, we really don't see many differences in terms of the population identified, which is kind of good, I guess, in a sense. I mean, it doesn't tell us that we only have one pathway that like, gets us to equity, it's, so it's kind of a good thing. I also looked at the scores of the kids identified. I know there's a lot of stuff on here, the things I just want to emphasize are, you know, the rows are all the different pathways I modeled, the two highlighted columns are the lowest score of a kid identified, so like, the weakest, I use that term with really big air quotes, the weakest student placed in the program. So, under the, say, national norms, the weakest student placed in the advanced math program has a COGAT of 117, that's actually a little bit stronger than what they have now, but almost any pathway, you get something really similar. Same with MAP. Under the current system, the weakest MAP student has about a 210, that's about two years advanced, just for context, so the weakest student in advanced math is two years advanced. That's really consistent across all the pathways. Again, you could look at this and be like, well, that's boring, because you don't find anything different, but that's the point, is what we found out is that all of the systems identify pretty similar average kids, like what the average is of, say, the advanced math population. And if, we're not placing kids who would likely struggle, like, we're not, we're not placing kids in advanced math now who are just not ready for it, that's not what we found. This is by building. So under these different, the columns now are the different identification norms, and these are the number of kids identified at each building, so currently, you know, you can see differences across building. One of the benefits of something like a district norm, or a school norm, is this would become much more consistent across schools, and also across years. So just imagine that for a second, if you say advanced math is the top 10% of the district, it's going to be 10% of the students every year, whether the students are rocking it, or whether they're really struggling, it's always going to be 10%. So there's a logistical benefit to that, there is a trade-off, that now the classes might have students that are stronger, or a little bit weaker every year, just depending on the cohort, kids vary. So it's a little bit of a trade-off, but logistically speaking, it kind of evens out the number of kids you identify. I should also point, ah, I got my notes here, the other thing I looked at, there's not a chart for this, I'm sure you're all very upset about that. Of the 75 students identified now, in advanced math, 65 of them would also be in that, that far-right national or school group. So 75 are identified now, we would catch 65 of them in that 98, so we'd actually miss 10. Now, we're not going to go back in time and de-gift them or anything, that's not the point. The reason I'm pointing that out is we would get slightly different kids, because again, we're using different measures, we're not using the placement tests anymore in this scenario. And the kids that the, say, national or school path would get, that the current system doesn't, are ones that are relatively weaker on MAP and COGAT, but that placement test like, goose their score. Neither is good or bad. Uh, we don't, well, we could figure it out, but not until after we tried it. There's no way to know, like, are the students without the placement test the one would really benefit the most? It's kind of the one unknown. So all of this is a long, very long way of saying that all of these systems get us very similar kids. You're not going to get 60, better than 65 out of 75, like, it, just due to random noise in assessment, you're going to get differences like that. So all of this tells me we're getting very similar kids regardless of which one of these systems we use, and we did spend a lot of time today talking about the greater nuance, but, but I'm going to go away for the sake of time. Just ALA, same thing but for advanced language arts, this would be sixth grade. You will notice the Hispanic group doesn't have any bars, that's because there are no students identified for ALA currently, or under any of the alternatives. Certainly not good, but keep in mind, that's 5%, so the difference between 0 and 1 could be one kid in a given year, just not trying to defend it, just for context. Same thing, I look at this, I don't see really any big differences. The bars for black students look a little weird, but again, that's the difference between two students versus one student in a given year, because again, it's just small incidence groups. Same thing, we can probably just go right past and say the same thing. Under the current system, the weakest COGAT is 116, under most of the alternatives, it goes to 119, that's not really very meaningfully different in my mind, 227s across the board, we get the same profile of kids under the alternatives as we do with the current system, is my read of this. And then this is again, the identification by building, the highlighted groups are the middle school feeders, just to kind of give you some context if you want to see like, how many kids would be going into each building. And in this case, of the 60 kids identified currently, about 43 would be caught by the national or school pathway. Again, the national or school pathway would get us higher MAP and COGAT scoring students, but would miss some of those students who right now are mostly getting in on the placement tests. And that's really the big philosophical decision for the district is, is that additional information gained by the placement tests worth the additional resources that it takes? The time to test, the time for the kids, and also the imperfection that's present in there? I'm not going to go into that, for the sake of time, but anytime we have a subjectively scored assessment, we also insert a lot of greater error. You're in part measuring the person doing the grading, whenever you have a subjectively scored assessment. We're removing that factor in the alternatives, because we don't have any of those anymore. So benefits of the kind of revised systems, you'd have more consistent identification across buildings, across years. We do see a little bit of equity improvements under the sum of the options, but it's not, it's not substantial, they're really pretty similar. The biggest benefit is really quite a bit of simplicity and practical logistical ease. So all of the hours, that all of the content folks spend administering the placement tests, grading the placement tests, the hours that the students spend taking them, the fact that the testing schedule for MAP is actually dictated by the placement tests, so it's not a small factor, it is a lot of time and energy, that doesn't mean don't do it, that just means that's the cost of that benefit. And so the thing that district has to really decide is, are we getting such good, important information out of those placement tests that we should keep it, or can we get the same benefits without it? It's a hard question to ask in the abstract, but from what I can do, the answer is yes, you get very similar kids. So simplistically, simplicity, logistical ease, really the benefits. Biggest drawbacks, for both these two top points, what if there are really critical skills those placement tests are measuring, without which the kids will just really struggle in the advanced classes? There's no way to know that ahead of time. Is it a thing maybe, especially like, for example, writing? There's some writing on the ALA placement test, writing is not measured by MAP, writing is not measured by COGAT, maybe now we're setting those students in without writing skills, and now they're going to completely fail. I'm skeptical of it, but that's the potential drawback of removing that data point, just to give you the full picture. We are removing kind of the least correlated of the data points, which is that placement test. And then finally, services, it seems weird to kind of say, oh yeah, and by the way, services, but a lot of the requests from my charge was about identification. So services, again, I've already mentioned kind of the comments that parents brought up, we want to fill this entire spectrum, so what, to figure out what services we have to offer to make sure every kid is challenged. Really, it's this tier-two world that we're missing. You know, if you are a fourth grader that's already doing algebra, you've got a pretty good home in the district right now. If you are a grade-level student, which in the district means about a year above grade level, you got a pretty good home in tier one, but it's that donut hole, like, kind of like, you're maybe 70th percentile to maybe 90th percentile kids that kind of fall in this no-man's-land. And so what I try to think about is what could, what could fill that? Right now, it's the classroom teacher, plus the coaches, you know, what, what can they collaborate on to offer? And you all know teachers have a lot going on, and there's, these kids just usually aren't the ones that immediately jump up and get the most time, for understandable reasons. So one of the things to think about is some different ways of doing instructional grouping. So this is an example Windsor classroom right now, I picked on Windsor for absolutely no reason whatsoever, I just picked it at random. But again, this is what Windsor would look like, where there are students that are as low as a 158 on MAP and as high as a 249. I can't overstate this enough, that really is the entire K-12 continuum, MAP doesn't go much lower than 159, it doesn't go much higher than 249, so it's a big range. A heterogeneous grouping kind of puts the entire range in every single class, which means every single teacher has to be everything to everyone, which is just a hard task, it's not a failure of teachers, it's just a very difficult task. One way, it's not a perfect way, it's not the only way, to try to address that, oh, and this is just, that blue box would be if the teacher was differentiating about three grade levels. That's kind of the range that the teacher would be covering, which is probably already ambitious, because differentiation is really hard. The red boxes would be, okay, maybe we take the accelerated kids, maybe we have some remedial services taking those other kids, but we still have those donut holes. A different way of clustering, and then, this is in a world in which there is no ALA, there's no advanced math classes, because it's younger grades, would be to, instead of having about 75 to 90 RIT points in every class, we have maybe 75. So taking seven grade levels of readiness in every class, and maybe making it five or six. So these are still incredibly diverse classes. I should also say, there's a general rule, we don't do this if when we go to try to do it, it makes classes that look different from each other, like a class is full of white kids and a class full of brown kids. That's like a no-go, means, it means we try something else. But the goal here is to try to just bring down the range and allow teachers to specialize, so that that blue box gets bigger and more kids get challenged. The reason why only one class has the top group, again, is so that that group can probably be taking great accelerated math, great accelerated ALA, like, they're, they're, they're doing a different content. Again, this is not the only option, this is just an option that can kind of challenge those above-average kids. The other thing would just be to push a little harder on a lever, is to do, be a little more proactive in the use of acceleration. And so again, you know, roughly 5% of your third graders would get most of the points on the IO acceleration scale, so that's kind of the standard criteria to determine grade acceleration. You've got 5% of students that would probably get 100% of the points, they would make very strong candidates. So this isn't lowering the bar to grade acceleration, this is actually just being a little more proactive about seeking out kids who would benefit. Because this whole thing is just about chipping away at unmet needs, taking that whole range of kids that you got, and making sure that everyone has someplace where they're challenged. Not ever any one way to do it, there's usually lots a little different, that's what MLS is all about. So kind of, you know, in the magical world, all this happens, expanded acceleration, we expand access to kind of the advanced classes through the alternative criteria, the, the team and I have kind of talked about staff professional development at tier one, how else could we use additional advanced learning coaches or something like that? Hopefully by kind of adding all these tools in, we go from whatever X% of kids are being challenged now to a, to some larger percent. That's, that's kind of the goal. So just kind of in summary, before I, before I, I stop here, you know, kind of the, the general recommendations, always a lot of options presented in the report. Make the identification process simpler and less teacher-dependent, which is because of the grading, the placement tests, nominations, things like that. So make them based on universally collected data instead of some optional data. Move to some kind of non-national norm, there's a bunch of different options I presented that each have strengths and weaknesses, that will make the identification process more consistent from year to year, from building to building. There are a range of options that go from zero cost, in the form of acceleration, to kind of, you know, high cost in terms of adding additional staff that would do services in kind of the early grades, that you could consider. I usually start with the, the least costly, but those have drawbacks. There's kind of always a, a bullet in here for things like working with, making sure the PD calendar for staff just includes some things related to advanced learning, you know, it's not enough to send home an extra worksheet each week, which is the most common form of differentiation for advanced learners, especially if we're talking about kids that are three, four years advanced. A little bit of tweaking of like, fourth grade math to a kid that's already mastered algebra isn't, I mean, it's, it's pointless, it's not going to do anything. And then there's also this big question mark about, thoughts about pre-grade four and six. It's always difficult to decide when should services start, there's not a clear answer. You're in the ballpark already, but there are, definitely brought up by parents, it's definitely brought up by staff, that, you know, it's a while before any advanced learning opportunities start. Kids are just as advanced as first grade as they are in sixth grade. And so right now, we just have to kind of hope they kind of stay advanced, because kids don't just happily move along, you know, they start to lose motivation, they start to lose interest, and that's actually my main concern, is, you got a little, you know, like, a little girl that's super into math in first grade, how long does that student stay excited about math if she's seeing this two-year-below content, like, year after year? That's the thing that most worries me, not just growth, but kind of motivation, excitement for school. Okay, that was a lot. I wanted it to be, believe it or not, I wanted it to be faster because, I told, I told the group earlier, I'm on the, my village zoning board, and so I sit in some long meetings sometimes too, so I have a lot of empathy for you all, but I also want to make sure to give you as much information as I can, so that you can do what you do. So what else can I tell you?
Thank you, Dr. Peters, that was really comprehensive, and thank you for serving on your zoning board, we appreciate that too. Um, I'll open up the board for any questions, but that was really very interesting, it's really, really interesting.
Madam President.
Yes, Brian.
So a couple of things jumped out at me, not really questions, probably observations, challenges, call them what you want. Great point about the identification changes, right? Because if we just change the identification process and all we wind up doing is increasing our numbers, if every kid's advanced, then no kid's advanced, right, you know, kind of thing? So I'd caution for that. And I saw that most in the charts you showed, the national or school, and the national or district, just seems like the numbers. And then when you said that we were leaving out 10-ish or so of our existing ones, so, so that, that process has a lot of fallout, so that's just my two cents. So I'd be leaning more towards one of the district or the school plans. I also liked the notion of simplifying, right? Obviously, we have many other uses for our wonderful standardized tests, so obviously, MAP and COGAT aren't going anywhere, but give some consideration to the removal or the, the improvement or removal of the placement test, you know? If, if we can substantiate that with some of the models that Dr. Peters ran, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I, and again, you mentioned this yourself, I mean, for me, the biggest takeaway is the services, right? How do we fill the donut hole? So it's not about how we determine what kids need intervention or, or advanced, you know, placements or what have you, but what are we doing there? That's, that's where the rubber meets the road for me as a board member, because quite frankly, all the other stuff, I, you know, that's not.
It's a means to an end.
Yeah, that's not my dance.
We identify so that we can better serve, otherwise, we shouldn't do it.
And then, so the last thing, you know, and, and this is really more broad and very big picture, in my opinion, as a parent and a marketing guy, but, uh, like, in that filling of the donut, or in that service, you know, space, you know, let's look at things like multi-grade, multi-age, blended classrooms, right? It doesn't have to be all about the one teacher differentiating for her fifth grade, her or his fifth grade classroom, right? If we start to reincorporate and revisit some, some of those concepts, so, those are my thoughts.
Absolutely. Sometimes I think about services in many ways are just about blurring the artificial lines between grade levels. So not, you know, burning down the whole system of grade levels, although there are districts that have done that, which is a really fun world to look into, schools that don't have grade levels. But just making it so that a kid that's in fourth grade that needs fifth grade math can get it without an act of Congress, you know, it doesn't take a parent advocating, you know, for years to get it. So how can we just smudge that line between what 12-month period you were born in, and whether or not you get to learn X today a little bit? Everything we can do to move in that direction is progress.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. I think that's all I had, so.
Madam President?
Yes, Kevin.
Thank you so much for the detailed presentation. One thing that I was thinking about when you were talking about the different options for placement, I, I definitely am in favor of removing that placement test, largely because of the data points that you were able to demonstrate, and how it's kind of redundant, and I do think that kids spend too much time taking tests, and teachers have better things to do than score those tests. I am wondering though about the proposed scenarios where we eliminate the Ranzilli or the teacher recommendation, thinking in terms of students who might be poor test-takers but really good in the classroom, and really good at the actual math concepts or reading ALA concepts. Do you have any, any response to those concerns that might come up from parents or teachers about that, students with test anxiety, or just not good test-taker, so to speak?
I do, it's a really, it's a really great and totally valid point, and something that, the reason it wasn't in the presentation is because it really came from your team here, we were working from, for a couple hours today. One of the things was, that we really talked a lot about was, perhaps thinking about some of these pathways as like, the first scoop, the first pathway, and then combining that with other OR pathways? So an OR would just mean you can be identified via pathway A, maybe something like one of the ones we talked about, or pathway B, or pathway C. And we actually talked specifically about students that have a particular kind of disability, or students that are multilingual learners, who maybe our identification, our standard identification system is just not going to function well for, and the need to build alternative pathways for specific groups that we have concerns we might miss, and I think the group you just identified is a perfect example. And so I've been in places before where there's been kind of this very standardized testing pathway, or a teacher rating scale of some kind, or some kind of classroom performance. The only thing I would really recommend is that, whenever possible, and it's not always possible, and that's okay, because sometimes things aren't possible, ideally, we'd have that teacher rating or that solicitation of information from, on every kid, because if what happens is, okay, you're placed in advanced math if you meet the test score, or your teacher score, or your teacher fills out a form, which is an optional form, then we're measuring a lot of other things. Does the teacher know about the program, which many will not, first your teacher? Does the teacher believe it's good for you? Does the teacher think that, yes, girls can be advanced in math? We start measuring a lot of other stuff, not because teachers are in any way bad, because teachers are humans and they're inconsistent. Measurement person in me hates humans. You know, they're too different. You know, they all have different life experiences. It makes things very difficult. So, yes, there's definite strengths to that. The group talked about them a lot. My only urge would be try to make sure that that is not your in if you meet the identification system, or if like a parent pushes your teacher to fill out the form, because then we start having an equity and also just an effectiveness issue. But I think the challenge you bring up is a very good one, and I'm not just saying this. It was brought up quite a bit today in the meetings.
Thank you. And I just had one other thing. This isn't, I guess, not necessarily a question, just kind of an observation, because you were talking about how under certain scenarios, we might be missing the identification of students who would benefit from advanced placement, or we might have situations where we have kids who are in a situation where it's too much of a challenge for their abilities. And just thinking for myself as a parent and an educator and a member of the board, thinking about all the kids in our district, I mean, I know it's not an either-or scenario. I think ideally, we do want to hit those tier-two kids in what you described as that donut hole, but in our current scenario where we're not seeing an option for those kids, I would rather see kids in that tier-two area struggle and be challenged in an advanced class than coast and get bored in a grade-level class. So just some food for thought, I guess.
Placement is always about balancing false positives and false negatives. So false positives are kids we put in the class who really aren't ready, and of course, you never know this, this is theoretical. False negatives are kids you kept back even though they could have done it. And you can design identification systems to lean one way or the other. Some services are really, really advanced, and should we make the wrong decision, they're hard to undo, I don't know what would do this, but you know, have a negative effect on the kid, really hurt their self-efficacy in math. We might want to err on the side of not. Most services aren't like that, so I tend to be on the same side as you, which is we should probably err on the side of inclusion, even if sometimes we do have kids that struggle. And it's also relatively easy, and for most of these services, to build in systems that can walk it back if it really is a bad thing. So like three weeks in, this is just not going well. It's not that hard to build in a check-in with your teachers where, you know, the content specialists reach out and say, hey, this is just a check-in, how are these students doing? Some aren't doing well, we can find a, I call it a soft landing, to transition the student back to the regular intervention. Because, yes, I think the data, I don't, I can't know this for sure, the data suggests to me that a larger number of your students would be able to do the advanced courses. But in doing that, you'd have more fail. You can't increase the enrollment without having sometimes some that struggle at higher rates. If we only let 36s go to the University of Illinois, you know, we'd never have anyone struggle, but we don't. We let more kids try, and so I think that's definitely a good principle to think is erring on the side of inclusion, even if that means more kids struggling.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
First, Dr. Peters, thank you for the great clarity in your presentation. A lot of times, issues come before us and they're a lot more nebulous and, but...
All right, I'll take it.
Yeah, so thank you for that clarity, and also, thank you for the way you expressed, you know, we talked, you mentioned chipping away at unmet needs, but what was really powerful is how you stated, you know, the fear of a child losing that fire for learning. And that really spoke to me and resonates in terms of, you know, we can get antiseptic with budgets and stuff, but the thought of that happening to a child based, you know, we would definitely want to avoid that and work to engage all our kids in every way we can. I also want to thank Dr. Fitzpatrick for acknowledging right up the front that you and your team are looking to adjust the identification process. You put that out there right away. That was a question I had, ready, but you answered it. And so, to either yourself or Dr. Vine, I would wonder if you could be a little more specific about when you might come back to the board about your short, medium, and long-term thoughts, understanding that it's a journey and that, you know, we're not looking for the endpoint of what might happen, but even as, would spring of be too early?
Let me start by saying, in terms of tweaking, the identification system, the Department of Student Learning has done that many times over the past years. So it's not something that they would come back to the board and say, now, we're going to change our rubric this way. They will make that decision after they further analyze what are the options, what's the best option. I think we want to make sure we capture as many kids, right? And historically, part of the reason that we had the second level of testing was, well, we grabbed another eight kids through that, right? So they'll go ahead and make that determination in terms of the, how they'll adjust the identification for next year, but then the longer, medium-longer term things will be where they'll come back to the board with, now we have some recommendations. I don't know, Becky, if you guys already have kind of a timeline on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we're going to jump right into action planning, but as you saw from some of the pathways that were mentioned or the service options, it requires everything from changes in possibly personnel, in responsibilities, so those are some bigger conversations, and I think we'll kind of want to take a look, we really need to dig into each one of those pathways and all of those opportunities, and then have conversations, you know, I think as a cabinet group, so it involves more people beyond just the Department of Student Learning to make some determinations about that. So I'm not really answering your question in full.
Yeah, we don't know the date yet, but there is more information to collect.
Yeah.
Sure, I guess, and I understand all that you're saying.
Yeah.
So I want to tread carefully here, and I'm not trying to pin you down to May board meeting or anything like that.
Yeah.
But more that, again, that we're on a journey and that we've got a clear, as I said, a lot of clarity in here, and we are at the beginning of this school year, and that, I'll be honest, I would hope that the team could come back saying that this is where we are planning some changes, whatever they are, before the next school year, and then further on. Again, not the endpoint, but a place, a place along that journey so that we can hear, that we can, we can hear about all the great work you're doing. It's not that I doubt that it's going to happen.
Yeah.
But more that, as our oversight, I think that's, I think that's our responsibility to ask, and so...
Certainly, yeah. And, you know, I think it gets more into, I'm not the only decision-maker in the group. Maybe it was how, is how I would phrase it. So, but I would say, too, I mean, this was a, this, we initiated this. We had some questions, so very proactively, we wanted to take a closer look at what was happening. So we feel a sense of urgency to really kind of take a look at. So we're excited to have this information now with the clarity that you talked about to be able to dig in. So I am honestly hopeful that we'll have some more specifics for you on actual services before the year is out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Madam President.
Yes, Gina, and then Liz, I saw you going for it, too. Go for it, yeah.
Great presentation, love the data. Love the data. Found something interesting, not sure if it's something to review or not review, but I thought it was really interesting to look at the fact that, from a, whether or not it be professional development, or if it was somewhere we piloted a curriculum before we rolled it out, but I thought it was really interesting that Windsor was the only school that had, under the current scenario, double-digit students for both the ALA and the math. I also thought it was interesting, if you look at what were the top schools with the top number of students, and I don't know if there's anything behind that data around our curriculum or the way we pilot our curriculum, but I just thought it was interesting because some of it was our smaller schools. So there might be something there, and it might be only for professional development or team teaching or however you want to look at it, but that was just like, it stood out at me when I was looking at, okay, these schools have the higher numbers and these schools have the lower numbers, with Westgate being our largest school and not having as high of a number. There were nuggets in there, like as I was looking at the data and consuming the data a little bit differently, there were some nuggets in there that might be interesting to review. I don't know if you have anything behind that or not, not looking for it right now, but it might be something that helps out the team as well as they are trying to unpack this and take a look at it. The other thing will be really interesting now is to see, so this is the what, right? And we know that the so-what has identified a donut hole, and the now-what, to Greg's point, and looking at what we're going to be able to do with this to take the next step with all of this great information that we've now been provided. So I wish you the best of luck. There's a lot of great stuff here. I know it's not going to be an easy road, but at least now you have a lot of information to be able to make the next steps, so.
Yeah, I think just two things I'll say on that. Yeah, I think there were suspicions, so to have now the data to confirm some of those suspicions is greatly appreciated. And with respect to your point about the nuggets, I'll say that's even in a larger conversation, and we do embark on a lot of conversations, you know, with teachers, particular grade levels, ascertaining what kinds of things are happening. Talk to us about how you're using the curriculum. Are there certain practices you're using that result in maybe these greater number of students performing at a higher level? Maybe we want to make sure that those are replicated across other schools, or maybe we want to make sure there's great integrity with those things happening across other schools. So not even just for advanced learning, but across the board, yeah, we're really pretty heavy, as we have some other Department of Student Learning members here, pretty heavily involved in looking at information and heading out to buildings to talk specifically with principals and teachers about that. So thanks. Yeah, we're on it.
Allison's tweaking, I think, the scores there. Thanks, good questions. Liz?
Thank you, Madam President. I echo my colleagues in their gratitude for your amazing presentation and your motivation to do this study. And you kind of answered my question a little bit already, but I was just curious, when you say you're not the only decision-maker, there's a team, are all of the teachers who would like to be a part of any changes made, given the opportunity to be a part of that conversation, all the staff members of different buildings, or how do you decide who is in that decision-making pool?
Yeah, I think it really depends on, we'll take a look at kind of the scope of what we're looking at, that might be reasonable changes to make, and then we'll make a decision. We do that really with a lot of our processes. We might say, well, this is a procedure, like when we've made tweaks to our advanced learning procedures in the past, we were not necessarily pulling in all teachers to make those tweaks at that point in time. If it's something that's bigger, where we feel like we need more information from teachers that might have opposing views, we might choose to bring together a committee. So I think until we really kind of map out which areas we're going to look at that might drive kind of the process, because we also, admittedly, we think carefully, too, about how much are we pulling staff out of their classrooms? Is this a decision, you know, where we can hopefully impart the information based on information that we already have from staff? But if it need be, then we bring people together like we do. We just had middle school social studies here this morning to work on a revision of their curriculum.
Thank you. Those were great questions and observations by the board in response to the very informative presentation, and kudos to your team, Dr. Fitzpatrick, for being proactive and going through the research and bringing somebody in to help us with that and giving us that different vantage point. What struck me is just a little point, I'm really interested, no answers needed today, but I'm really interested where this goes as far as the point that Dr. Peters brought about early identification, right? Because right now, I believe, you know, some of the advanced math and so forth starts at fourth grade, correct? So it'd be interesting, what would that model look like? What would that paradigm look like as far as the kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and if we can start that process earlier? And I just wanted to thank all of you who are here, the advanced team, and Katie, and Becky, and Dr. Peters, thank you so much. And if there's no other questions, we will let you go home and rest now.
Thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure, and I'm sure we'll be in touch to answer any other questions or any other support I can provide. Happy to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Peters. Good night.
The board will still be here. We will move on to business and finance. So the next item is an action item, hold on, let me make sure I'm not jumping. Yep, the next item is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2023-2024 budget as presented.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. The tentative budget was presented at the August board meeting, and a public hearing was held prior to tonight's regular meeting. Stacy, do you have any additional information about the budget?
So the budget, the tentative budget has been posted on the website for 30 days, and my office has received no communications regarding any questions or comments on the budget. As included in the board packet, there are a couple of changes in the final budget that, since you saw the tentative budget, that have a positive impact on the overall result of the budget, specifically about $1 million increase in our revenue, mainly made up of, and I think I mentioned that we had just gotten the CPPRT, our Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax numbers, the day I presented the tentative budget, so it wasn't reflected there, but that estimate was released, and it's about $800,000 higher than I had included in the tentative budget, as well as some increased revenue we're projecting for food service, since as we start this year, we're already seeing higher than we anticipated sales, which is, again, a positive, as well as just some additional carryover from some of our American Rescue Plan or ESER funding that, we've already made those expenditures in last year's budget, but the claim was through June 30, so the reimbursement is coming in this year, so those dollars are now added into the revenue side. And then while there's a short list of changes in the expenditure budget, the overall net effect is an increase in expenses of about $69,000. So overall, a net impact to the positive on the budget of $1 million, bringing our projected deficit from, I believe it was $37 million at the tentative budget presentation, down to the $36 million deficit that will be, or is included in the final budget, all really due to the impact of the expenses of the building additions and capital work that is going on this year in preparation for the full-day kindergarten, where the bond revenues that offset those costs were received in the prior year, thus the deficit this year.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there any questions for Stacy?
Madam President.
Yes.
Stacy, I'm sorry, can you, you probably just have to repeat, but maybe throw a little bit more color on that first statement about the increased revenue you projected.
So, part of our, in terms of our $1 million increase in the revenue from the tentative budget, so we get an allocation that bakes back to before the year 2000 on taxes paid on corporate personal property, and that, that projected revenue, we get that number from the Illinois Department of Revenue every year. That amount hadn't been released at the time I did the tentative budget, and we were told last year in that projection that it was inflated due to inflation, it was higher than normal. So I brought this year's back down to where I thought it might fall in the tentative budget. The number was released that day that I presented the tentative, and it was actually still, I guess, a higher number than I projected by about $800,000.
Okay, thank you. And then one last little asterisk question, marketing guy. What's an example of a corporate capital expenditure that would bring us that revenue? And if you don't know, that's fine, but like...
It's, I don't know exactly, but there was a tax on corporate personal property that was abated or discontinued before, before I've even been in this profession in the 90s, but that amount was frozen at the time of the... But that amount was frozen at the time of the value, or capped at the time of the value on personal property. So we continue to get a distribution based on what existed at that time, the value of it.
Okay, offline.
But it's a tax, so the rate changes.
Okay.
Pardon? I don't know, I mean, the Illinois Department of Revenue figures it. I don't really know how they get to the number. It can be anywhere, we've had it 800,000 in one year to 3.5 million last year. Obviously, it's tied to inflation, I'm guessing, in some way, because the values increase, the taxes applied to it then increase.
Thank you. Okay, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Jogi?
Yes.
Sir Niglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Neumann?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lana. Next, we have an annual information item. Stacy, please provide the information on the Administrator Compensation Report.
So Public Act 960434 requires that we present in, we do it in a chart format as the interpretation of school districts, the itemized total compensation for every employee in the district that holds an administrative certificate, a type 75, and works in a capacity utilizing that certificate. So it would be all of our administrators that are part of the TRS system, and total compensation includes salary, the contribution or the value, whether they take, what type of insurance they take, family or single, what type of leave allocations they receive, whether it's vacation, sick, personal, it's all included as part of their compensation package. And that information is required by law for every school district across the state to post on its website prior to October 1, and to present it at a public board meeting prior to posting it.
Thank you. Stacy, any questions about that for Stacy? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next portion for Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefit Report for 2023, which is another information item. Stacy, if you could provide information on that?
Sure. So a year after that last law was passed, they passed this law that requires the base salary and benefits of not only all of those administrators, but also all of the teachers in the school district. And the value of, they call it in this law, benefits, but it's total compensation because it includes any vacation days, sick days, and all dollars paid or compensation to the employee. We do report this information. It's a document we fill out for the state in the state's format and are required to present it at a public school board meeting and then post on the district website. It's also reported at the state and do by same time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments about that portion? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the sixth-day enrollment. Each year, the board receives an update on enrollment based on the sixth day of school. And Dr. K, please, if you could provide the information on that from the 2023-2024 school year.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present on the sixth-day enrollment. This is a yearly information item, and this year, the sixth day was Thursday, August the 24th. One of the priorities in the district is to maintain low class sizes to support our staff and students, particularly at our pre-K through 5th grade school setting. Low class sizes allow us to further differentiate instruction, devote more time to individualized instruction for our students, and provide a stronger learning environment for our classroom community. Some of the continued feedback we receive from our constituents is that they choose to enroll their children in our district based on our low class sizes, and this helps to build that positive reputation that our school district continues to hold. So if I could go to slide four, or page four, and that would be on me. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it. The first slide that I wanted to show you guys is this one currently on display. This graph on page four is a snapshot of our overall early childhood through 8th grade enrollment. As you can see, the total number of students that are served by Arlington District 25 is 5,270 students this year. This is a decrease overall of 20 students from the previous school six-day enrollment of 5,290, or less than 1% decrease throughout the district. Looking back at our historical records from 2013 to 2014, as you can see on the chart, through 2018, 2019, our student population increased by 7% during that time and has steadily decreased from 2018, 19 through this year by 8%, leaving us at almost the exact six-day enrollment back in 2013, 14. Our current enrollment for 1st grade through 5th grade is 2,891 students. Our kindergarten enrollment is down from 412 last year to 386 students. The promising news is that at the end of the school year, last year, 22, 23, we had 431 kindergartners, and this year, we enrolled 539 1st graders. So there is an additional 108 1st graders who did not previously attend kindergarten with us last year. So we will continue to work with our demographer, Dr. John Casarda, in the future to project enrollment growth in the school district with our upcoming program changes. The impact of COVID-19 continues to run its course on enrollment projections. I would recommend that we engage in another enrollment study around this time next year once we know how many students enroll in our full-day kindergarten program. Slide six, this next chart shows our six-day enrollment by school. There are a couple areas to point out. With our largest increase throughout the district at Thomas Middle School, increasing 46 students for a total population of 998, I do believe the principal was hoping for two more to get to 1,000. Two other schools showed an increase in total student enrollment, Westgate and Windsor. You'll notice that five of our buildings saw an enrollment decrease this year. Olive's enrollment was the most significant, down by 43. Olive graduated a class of 124 1st graders and enrolled 65 kindergartners this year. They also added 17 new 1st graders that had not attended kindergarten in District 25 last year. So we will continue to watch the trends and compare them to the projected enrollment for staffing and infrastructure needs. Slide eight tracks our early childhood numbers, and we track and monitor our early student enrollment on a monthly basis. While this chart currently shows that we are servicing 132 early childhood students, we know that this number will increase steadily throughout the school year. Students age into the EC program throughout the school year when they turn three years old. So just as a point of reference, last year, we added 34 students throughout the school year after the six-day enrollment. Slide nine is a pretty exciting one, but there is an error in the title, so remove early childhood program, just cross that out. It's just enrollment history all the way back from 1957 through 2023. So just make sure you notice, I'll correct the title, just remove early childhood program. But it is neat to see the enrollment projection all the way back, or the enrollment from 1957 through this school year. Slide 11 shows our longitudinal kindergarten through 8th grade enrollment trends since 2003. Prior to the pandemic, it was forecasted our enrollment may be leveling off, and during the pandemic, we saw an enrollment decrease significantly between 2019 and 20 through 2020, 21, but has since started to level off to a certain degree. Again, we'll work with Dr. John Casarda to look at our future projections to help us ascertain the future enrollment needs with the added projection for what should be expected when the enrollment changes with our full-day kindergarten program. We are thankful for the Board of Education's support and the community's support to meet the needs of our student population. On slide 13, you'll notice a variety of lines. This is from our K8 enrollment projection that was conducted back in January of 2022. This chart shows a black line, which is our actual student enrollment, and the projected enrollment with the thick blue line indicating less than projected enrollment, green indicating greater than expected enrollment, and the red line indicating the expected enrollment. Keep in mind the date that this was done was January 2022. The expected K8 enrollment from this demographic study completed in January 22 had us at 5,039, and we are slightly above with 5,096 students. This next one on slide 14 was a projection we had done in May of 2022, and the benefit of this one was anticipating that full-day kindergarten would start right now. So we were trying to figure out, how can we project how many kindergarten students we might get if we started full-day kindergarten? So this chart shows a black line, which is our actual student enrollment, and with the blue line indicating less than expected, the green line indicating greater, and the red line indicating expected. What I'm going to show you next is a combination of all of the lines together. It's an exciting chart. That is slide 15. So this final slide incorporates both projections from January 22 and May of 22. Remember that the significance between the two is that the projections in January did not contemplate full-day kindergarten. On this chart, the dotted blue, red, and green are the most recent projections from May of 22 with the anticipated full-day kindergarten that was potentially going to start this So while the study is projecting us to be adding full-day kindergarten one year early, it does give us a good information to plan based on the expectation that enrollment will trend higher with full-day kindergarten. So in addition to the slides, I've included two additional documents. I don't know if I continue with this. I will get to what I want. That would be great. So there were two additional documents put into the board. So if you just want to pull one of them up, it's not in this presentation, it's separate, so I'll just read. So in addition to these, I've included two additional documents with a breakdown of class sizes at each one of the grade elementary schools, and the number of students served at each grade level to determine the class size per grade level. Overall, we continue to recognize that predicting our enrollment models is challenging. We will continue to analyze our enrollment data frequently in order to make our enrollment projections with greater accuracy. I want to acknowledge the great work of Lori, Stacy, Ryan, Sandy, Becky, and Diane, who have all done an outstanding job to help us set our parameters in looking at the staffing costs that enable us to support our students' and staff needs. I will continue to echo the words of my great predecessor, that Arlington Heights is and remains a destination district for our families that care about education and desire schools with exemplary teachers and teaching staff. The reputation of our district remains strong. A great deal of gratitude in large part goes to you, the Board of Education, and your priority to maintain low class sizes within the elementary and middle school setting. One thing that stood out to me when Dr. Peters talked was when he mentioned class sizes of 28. Luckily, we don't have that at the elementary buildings. Arlington District 25 continues to attract families because of the outstanding education and engaged community that students, engaged community that's of learning that students receive in our school district. We definitely appreciate the continued support, and thank you for allowing me to present on the six-day enrollment this year. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Dr. K. Every year, you quote Dr. Jake Chung. I wonder if he always gets hiccups tonight, you know, on the six-day enrollment report.
I would imagine he is listening each year to make sure I do.
Did Dr. K mention my name?
Yes.
That's awesome, to honor the legacy of past administrators. I will open up the floor for questions, if any questions for my colleagues.
Madam President?
Yes, Kevin.
Dr. K, thank you for that excellent presentation. I'm just curious, and it's fine if you don't know this, did past Casarda projections, and I'm thinking mainly in terms of around 2014 when these graphs start, did they show the, or I guess, I guess prior to 2014 is what I'm really asking, did they predict the very large jump in enrollment we experienced in the mid to late 20 teens?
Yes, it just didn't anticipate what happened with COVID. So we were projecting the expected projections with our enrollment, but COVID completely changed, which is why we did two studies quickly to try to figure out what should we expect in that following school year. And we knew full-day kindergarten was coming, so we thought, how are we going to identify or project how many kids might enroll? So that study from May of 2022 was really helpful, but at that time, we hadn't decided what year we wanted to start full-day kindergarten. So we said, well, just do it, get the numbers, and then let's project what it will be. So my recommendation would be to go back to Dr. Casarda about a year from now, after we have real numbers, and see, will they be anticipated to elevate as they currently are with our current projections that, again, aren't perfect, but to be off by only, I think it was 20 to 30 kids at this point, is pretty impressive. That's one classroom off from the actual reality of the numbers.
Okay, thanks, Dr. K. A good question, Kevin. Dr. K, you know, and this is probably a Dr. Biden question, too, when does kindergarten registration begin?
I'm happy to start with it. So we've already internally started to talk about those questions. Originally, not originally, but typically, it's in January, we start an electronic enrollment for kindergarten, and then we push really heavily in February, right around the conference days with parents, to capture more of the information. But it starts electronically in January.
Okay, so we'll know in a couple of months.
There's been a lot of work already put into marketing, making sure everyone knows in the community that we're going full-day. We're building a website that's dedicated to just that topic, so there's already a lot of pre-planning happening currently to ensure that marketing takes place, so we get those numbers hopefully in January, February, to really work with.
Thank you. Thanks for all that pre-work. We know, we know a lot of hustle and bustle goes on behind the scenes. And any guesses, any estimates as to what, you know, the 20-student reduction, do we know? And if you don't have the answer now, that's okay. I was just curious as to what.
I mean, I don't have the exact answer, but one of the comments I made around that topic was, looking at individual schools like Olive, when you graduate 124 students, but only bring in 65, it looks bad, but when you compare then how many they had in kindergarten last year to how many they have in 1st grade, you see that they're coming back.
Yeah.
They're just choosing to go most likely to a full-day kindergarten option outside of the school district. So obviously, it's going to fluctuate, and I'm satisfied right now that it is only 20 and not more, because during that COVID time, to lose about 200 kids was pretty impactful.
Yeah. It's going to be interesting to see the numbers next year.
Very.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. K. We will now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Biden, if you could please review any Freedom of Information items with us.
Thank you. The board has the list. There were one, two, three, four, five requests since our last meeting, and all of those requests have been responded to.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the first reading of policies. And this, this time at the policy committee, I want to thank my colleague Greg for leading the policy committee meeting, because we were dividing and conquering, because I was at a superintendent's search meeting. So thank you for doing that, Greg, and I know Kevin attended, too, so that was really good, and Dr. Biden was leading it as well. So Dr. Biden, if you could please provide information on the first reading of policies from Press 112.
Sure, and I'll just add, at that policy committee meeting, voting members were Greg and Rachel and.
Rich was there, too.
Kevin was there as well, providing input, asking questions. These are first reading, there's not major changes here, so instead of going through every one, I will just highlight for the board policies here that do have changes. Policy 4:45, which is called insufficient fund checks and debt recovery. This just actually has a section that IASB is recommending for boards to consider, that basically you can enter into an intergovernmental agreement with your state office of the comptroller on debt recovery. If your state office has a debt recovery system for schools, ours does not. So this was added to be considered. The blue highlighting and all the crossouts shows that administration and attorneys say, let's not add that, because our Illinois Office of Comptroller doesn't even offer this program at this time. at this time. To school districts. Thank you. Then I think there's only one or two others that really have anything significant. I will skip ahead all the way. And all of these were approved to move forward 2-0 by the voting members. So that made it easy as well in terms of reporting out. The only, was there another one with changes? I thought there was one more. Oh, the only other thing, this came, a recommendation from the committee. The last policy in your packet is 6:210, called instructional materials. And there's a section, an old section in here about cable television that our school district can have a cable television program. We no longer have that. And so the committee recommended we just, that's not current, so just to delete it. But those are really the only changes to this set of policies from Press 112.
Thank you very much. So that was first reading, so we'll see them back again. Second reading to vote on. Okay, excellent. We'll now move on to the board protocols review, which is an action item. And before we do that, I want to truly thank the board again for all their hard work on maintaining effective governance. This, like I said before, directly positively impacts student success. And I want to thank Dr. Biden, our superintendent, for coordinating dates between seven of us board members to come up with a date that would work for all of us for this long three-hour, you know, board evaluation meeting. So we were supposed to meet in the spring, as you know, but then we couldn't, our calendars weren't lining up, so we couldn't meet. Then we moved the meeting to the fall to ensure we could all make it. However, as volunteers with full-time lives, it's always understandable when members can't make it. So I'm glad that the majority of the board members were able to put their heads together to fulfill this mission of reviewing our board governance framework. We made sure that each of you had a chance to review the document that was collaboratively put together by our board in consultation with the Illinois Association of School Boards. And grateful for the time spent together. It was, it was a good night and a long night of deep reflection about our governance practices. And together with Field Services Director Dr. Perry Hill from the Illinois Association of School Boards, board members agreed upon a set of board protocols to replace the previous document. So tonight, the board will vote to adopt these board protocols and include them in board policy. Therefore, this item is an action item. Can I, at this point, have a motion, please?
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the board protocols and replace the board governance framework with this current document.
Thank you so much. And the second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Dr. Biden, if you could please provide a little bit more information on the board protocols review that we've all had a chance to look at.
Thank you. Yeah, so as you mentioned, the board met with a field service director, Dr. Perry Hill. I think it's the first time I'd worked with Perry. I thought he was very effective at facilitating many viewpoints and capturing what the main thoughts were of the board. And we had tasked him with taking our 12-page document and putting it into a more user-friendly two-page document, taking out a lot of redundancies. That document had definitely been useful for many years, but it was definitely time to update that. So I thought he did a great job. The board was very engaged during your time there in thinking of all different kinds of ways of looking at what would help the board function efficiently and yet having a wide range, hearing a wide range of thoughts and input. And so that was the, the result was your two-page board protocols that really talk about how to, how this board can continue to function at a high level in terms of areas such as how to create what items go on an agenda, you know, being open and honest in communication. Engaging the community was an important item that the board wanted involved. Speaking with one voice when the board is represented. And then also board members and the difference in their roles if they're being an individual person of a community, participating in something in public versus in their role as a board. And all of that based very nicely on the foundational principles of effective governance, which Anisha referenced earlier. The board's actually being recognized for the work that you've done over the last couple of years to become efficient, to become effective, to align your practices. And so this is just taking that alignment to the next step to continue that efficiency and that effectiveness into the future. If, you know, once the board adapts us, this does become, it's been our practice to make this part of board policy. It becomes its own section at the beginning of the policy manual, and then we would have it at your seats for reference in future board meetings as well.
Thank you, Dr. Biden. Any questions, comments, reflections on that evening and the document from my colleagues? Seeing no questions. I, I thought it was, you know, even, I want to give a shout out to Adam, because Dr. Perry Hill really liked this six-hour customized logo effective principles. He was very impressed with this. And, and you know, there, there was a lot of things in board protocols. Maybe, Dr. Biden, if you could talk about it, as far as, we talked about it as a board as well, that there's some items in policy, and then it's in, in our agreements as well to kind of keep us all kind of functioning moving forward. But then we broke up the documents. So this time, we did a little bit different. We kind of broke up the documents, so it was like a one-page or back-to-back. But it's also, and then we broke it up into different sections for policy too, correct?
Yeah, so I would say the board drastically reduced the redundancies from policy and what had been in the governance framework. But through your discussion together with Dr. Hill, some items came up that the board felt collectively at that time still were important to highlight in the shorter version, because you felt they were topics that were, they were protocols that come up fairly often and that it would be helpful to highlight those in, in this document that you'll have in front of you at future board meetings.
Great. Thank you so much. So seeing no other questions or comments, we will take this to a vote, Lana. Sereniglia? Sorry, sorry, Lynn.
Sorry, Dr., Dr.
Yeah.
Anisha, there's.
Oh.
No, there's the suggestion, and I just didn't know if we were going to address it.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I can. There was one suggestion made by one board member in the wording on your board protocols number five about speaking with one voice. There was a suggestion of clarification there, which the, the board, right now, the motion, I think there was a motion made, right? The motion is to adopt this as it is without that. But in reference to that, this is one of the items, actually, that is also in policy about the board president being the spokesperson for the board and also in these protocols, updated protocols, one that, again, collectively during that workshop that you felt should continue to be highlighted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're ready to go for a vote. Lana, if you could please call the vote. Sereniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Epstein.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scaplato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we will move on to the superintendent's search. And I'm glad we're still ahead of the schedule. Lana always does a great job kind of outlining what time we'll be talking about what. So we are ahead of the schedule, so we're awake. We have sugar and chocolate, so we're good to go. As far as the superintendent's search, I'd like to provide an update on the work that has been done so far on the superintendent's search. There's been a great deal of communication about the position. I'd like to thank Adam Harris, Stacy Malik, and Lana O'Brien for their collaboration on this work. Attached to tonight's agenda is a copy of the variety of communications that have been shared throughout our community. It is pretty remarkable. Every home, every residence in Arlington Heights received a postcard about the superintendent's search. So everybody knows, they've got a cute little postcard with all the information, all the community forums that have been happening. So there are two more community forums coming up, and the community-wide survey is still open for input. The last that I heard from the superintendent's search firm, we had about 600 responses. So that's a good amount of responses. But that, so I want to tell the community, and, and of course, everything's been going out through all the, every school newsletters that have been going out from the district. We have a webpage, the tweets, the social media. We really, everybody in our community should really know because of the, so much work that's been done behind the seats by our communications department regarding the superintendent's search firm. So we encourage everyone in our community to share their input into this process. We really are looking for the community's input and for the difference. So if you haven't had a chance, if our, members of our community have not had a chance to attend a forum, know that there's two more community forums. You can go to our social media pages, go to our webpage. You'll hear all about where and when. And if you can't attend those, the community-wide survey is, is the place to go to as well. So please, please fill those out so that we know what you are looking for in, for your next superintendent for our district, because we are looking for that information from you. Also, Stacy Malik has some information to share with the board as we determine the comparative districts. We will use the appropriate compensation for our next superintendent. So Stacy, do you want to run that by us?
Sure, so included, typically, we look at our neighboring districts, our contiguous districts when we do comparisons for all of our other employee groups. So I am sharing with you those districts that include District 15, 21, 23, 26, 54, 57, 59, and then we also include 64. So those would be the districts that the search firm would gather their superintendent contract information to get an idea of the compensation packages that those districts have, are, have in place with their superintendents, some of which are brand-new individuals to the district, some that would be more, have served longer in their districts. But just to get an idea of the ranges of compensation packages that then we would plan to talk through with the board in terms of starting to set kind of a guide for compensation at the next close session meeting.
Thank you. Any, Greg, go ahead.
Yes, Madam President, I have a question. If this is a search firm question, but Stacy, if I could direct this to you. Do we know, like, or Dr. Biden? You looked at contiguous districts. Are the, you know, when searching for a superintendent, is that the most important factor, the geographic area that someone may work? Or is it the, a similar-sized district, a similar makeup of district that's independent of? Is it in the northwest suburbs? To what extent does that, the, the type of district play a factor?
I, I think typically, we look at what are our neighboring communities needing to pay to attract someone to this area? There, there's a lot of factors we could look at. I mean, size of district doesn't necessarily reflect the needs of a superintendent, because there's, you could look at demographics of a district and community needs of a district, and so many factors. I think based on this district, and as we just recently heard, being a destination district, I think that some of our, in this area, that is a standard that we're going to need to be aware of in terms of looking at a range for compensation and the types of things that go into compensation for a superintendent. Certainly, an actual negotiation of that agreement's going to be based on the specific candidate, level of experience, those, lots of those other factors as well. But knowing kind of what it takes to attract someone in this area and anticipating that there's only so far an employee, even I would say a superintendent, is going to drive, unless they're going to move into this community. So I think a regional compensation is reasonable, and I don't know if Lori has anything to add.
Yeah, I think definitely there's, like Stacy said, a lot of different ways to measure. I think within this group of contiguous districts, you have districts of different sizes, right? There are some here that are larger than District 25 and some here that are smaller than District 25. So I think this is a unique group in terms of it gives you a lot more variety than a typical regional district area might.
Thank you. Good question, Greg. Any other questions, comments, and just feedback about the superintendent's search? Anything that, that, you know, that we should, that you'd like me to convey to them? Know that if, you know, if you don't have those thoughts today, feel free to call me anytime. You could even reach out to them, because this, this process, we're being extremely thorough. It's really important. The feedback that I've heard from the focus groups that were, you know, we had focus groups for non-for-profit leaders that was separate. We had Arlington Heights leaders that was separate. I've heard just great feedback, and even for our teachers for the different schools, elementary, middle school. Everybody feels really heard, that feedback is coming in. So our search firm is going to have a lot of data to sift through, to put into a report and really look for, look at what is our community? What is Arlington Heights looking for in our next superintendent? So we have great feedback through multiple, multiple focus groups, and the survey is getting really great response. So if you have any other ways that we could make this better, just please let me know, let the search firms know. Gina?
Madam President, do you know what our response rate is on the survey at this point? What's the percentage?
Yeah, so we're at, I, I just got that information yesterday. I believe we're at about 600 responses. So I'm not sure what the percentage is, but I get that for you.
Well, if you consider that survey, right, went to 30,000 homes in Arlington Heights, right? But that's not unusual. A lot of people are going to be like, well, they don't have an opinion about that, so. So we'll have to see in the end, but I think 600 is probably a really good number.
Yeah, the, the search firm said that they were really happy with that number, that that was a really good, a good start, a good number. And then, but we have been pushing, you know, Adam, the district, Adam Harris's team has been pushing it everywhere. So, and the schools have too, and the principals too. So that's where we're at right now. And so we have till the 11th for the survey, so. No, not till the 11th. We have till the second. Yes, till the second to finish up. So one more week, a few more days. So everybody get your surveys in. I did one too.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just want to add, thank you for all the extra work you are doing in leading this team and, you know, collaborating with that search firm and all the stuffs you're taking behind the scenes to make this a smooth process. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, Greg. Yeah, it's, it's for, we're doing this together. We're doing this as a team, so we're going to keep going and get the next best superintendent into District 25. That is the goal. Okay, so moving on, we will go on to community input. If there's any second, any more comments for us, Lana? Okay, seeing none. For future addenda items, are there any new topics that have been previously discussed with Dr. Biden that, Dr. Biden, that you want to bring up?
No, we do have those on the list. You should have calendar appointment for the special meeting with the Arlington Park District. That will be a one-hour meeting, because then they have their own park district meeting following that. We've moved our ruler update presentation to November. We've had to be a little flexible with things, you know, as the superintendent's search information also is coming. So we're shooting, we're ready for November, but if that agenda seems a lot for the board, we'll move that. We haven't scheduled a date for the acceptable use policy, but we should be ready to do that. We'll look for, again, an upcoming agenda where it looks like some good time on that. We'll look for, again, an upcoming agenda where it looks like some good time on that. And then we haven't really had, had any further conversation yet about looking at student representation. But otherwise, there's been no other topics brought to my attention.
Madam President.
Yes, Greg.
I'll just insert a comment that there will be a presentation on student voice and, and school boards at the triple I conference, so it might make sense to do it after.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of us, when we divide and conquer at the school board conference, one of us will have to dash off to that one to hear more information. So, so we'll kind of plan it out with all the sessions that are going to be happening and the sessions that we're going to be presenting at, as far as the good work at District 25, that the board is going to be presenting at, at the school board conference as well. Okay. And as far as like the amount of time, thank you, Dr. Biden, for kind of, as Dr. Biden and I put the agendas together, we're very cognizant of the fact that our board members have been putting a lot of time because of superintendent's search firms. So each of you have had board member interviews with the search firm as well, so all the time that you've put in, the extra time, right? So we're cognizant with the presentations that are coming in, that the agendas reflect all the important work that needs to be going on into the district. So.
I'll raise.
Yeah.
All right.
You get more chocolate. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn the board meeting? Thank you, Gina. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Lana, could you please call roll?
Michael.
Yes.
Faso.
Yes.
Nierman.
Yes.
Scapalato.
Yes.
Jogi.
Yes.
Serniglia.
Yes, O'Brien.
Okay, thank you very much, and good night, everybody.
They did.
Yes, we already did. We're so good. We signed everything. Okay, thank you so much, Lana. Good night, everybody.